Good evening. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order tonight. The rest is scheduled to be in progress for Thursday, September 12th, 2024 at 5:00 PM. We will provide a ready stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for prayer. And dispatching would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united we are, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we just thank you. Give you all praise and glory this day, Lord. Watchovers, protect us. Lord, we want to make up to those that suffered twenty-three years ago during nine eleven, that we remember yesterday, Lord. Those families and those providers who gave their lives. Lord, we just wish that never for that evil should come upon us again. So, Lord, right now we're going to give you that, Lord, for your protection and watching over us. And, Lord, just keep us mindful that you are the King, King, and the Lord of lords. And you will always take care of us and watch over us. So, in the name of you, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
First up on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes for August 29th, 2024. I make the motion to approve the meeting minutes for August 29th, 2024. So, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the meeting minutes from August 29th, 2024. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero. Next up is the approval of claims and payroll.
Claims and payroll, all of them.
I made the motion to approve the spending payrolls to be added by the Department of Labor.
I will second. Motion and a second on the floor to approve claims and payroll accounts presented by Clark County Attorney. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments? And if there are, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I made the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I will second.
Motion and a second on the floor to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero to approve the agenda as presented. Next up is public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Please remember when you take the stand, please announce your name and your address for the record. Mr. Fireback, you're up first tonight, sir.
My name is William Fireback, 104 LeFarge Street in Indianapolis. And Renshaw Partners, uh, now put in the road inventory in 2016. And the commissioners said the road could be maintained, and which has not been maintained for the last eight years. And I came to you, Mr. Rockland, and asked you about the same thing, over six months ago. And you said I was on the list, and it's still yet to be done. Three hundred and sixty-foot road does not take eight and a half years to build.
I agree with you, and I'll check on that again, because I know it was supposed to be put on the list. I requested it personally.
What road is that?
It's V-N-A-L-E.
V-N-A-L-E, okay.
It's a road down out of now.
Yeah.
And the other side of the street was pregnant, and it's not even a road through the road.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll go, I'll double-check it again.
It's waiting no longer than the right, so it's going to be the Stuville.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Is that on our paving list?
I asked teams to add it on that, and I'm sure that it's just a short street coming here.
Yeah.
Ms. Basham?
Sandy Basham, 15219 New Market Road, Marysville, Indiana. Last night at the planning commission meeting, Brian spoke on the outcome of the Citizens Advisory Committee on Solar. First, I'd like to say thanks to Brian for heading that up and trying to keep it a level playing field. I would, I come tonight because I would like to elaborate a little bit on who we represented in those meetings. We have five hundred people who live in Clark County that are on the NoSolar page. And then we did a, um, we had approximately three hundred people fill out a survey that went out. We emailed people, over a hundred people, on a pretty regular basis, just keeping them informed on the status of the situation. And what you need to keep in mind is some of these people that we represent don't want solar at all. They don't want it anywhere in the county. And then we have people who are okay with six hundred and fifty-foot setbacks. So, that made our, our proposal and our decision very hard, you know, on that committee to come up with a compromise. And the only reason we came up with a compromise was because we were told that the setback was too much and, and that the commissioners, you know, felt the same way. So, obviously, we'd like to keep our current setback, but if that isn't possible, then I want you to consider this before you guys make a decision on it after it gets done at the planning level. In the old Bright Night Project, we had approximately ninety-two residential dwellings that would need to utilize an original six hundred and fifty-foot setback. We compromised by reducing that setback for ninety-nine percent of those in that group affected. And if you look at the pro-solar proposal, you'll find that they helped five people. They did increase their fifty, or they, they gave us fifty more feet on the two hundred and fifty. They moved to three hundred, but then they proceeded to ask us to decrease the property line setback by fifty. The decrease in the property line setback affects hundreds of other people that weren't even in the ninety-five originally. So, that, that gains them a lot more property. So, was that really a compromise? You know, I don't feel like it, but our group recently visited some solar facilities, Posey County, Shelby County, and Russian Henry. I gave you guys some pictures, and, you know, we were told that that setback was too big. We talked about farming, they can still farm it. Oh, you can't farm it. You can see from those pictures, they're farming that setback. Posey only has a three hundred-foot setback. I gave you guys an article, too, that if you'll look over, it talks about Posey and how they're now reconsidering their setbacks because they've had so many issues. Shelby County's project is still under construction, and they got approved at a three hundred-foot setback. They changed it to six sixty. They now have a moratorium. We talked to their planning director, and they're looking at maybe doing a six hundred and sixty-foot setback from the property line now. So, obviously, there's lots more that we need to be doing. We need to learn from these mistakes and not make the same ones and then have to go back and fix it again. This is what, our third time now, so I think it's important.
So, Sandy, to your point, she also provided me a name, and I forgot his title. I think he's like a project manager, construction manager of Posey County.
He's on the planning, he's, he's a county person on the planning.
And I can't remember his title, though.
His name, Mark Sykes.
Yeah, and I've got his name and contact information. I'll provide that to you all. He's kind of overseeing that entire project from the county's perspective. That's a, that's what I would consider as a goal between, between the county and the solar.
Yes, yes, and, and he is the one that's in that article that I gave you. He was the one that interviewed for that article.
Right, all right. I just want to make sure we made that, make that where it is. Thanks, Sandy. Uh, next up is Ms. Curry.
Kelly Curry, 40, 4015 St. Edward Road, yes. Um, a couple things. The stoplight at Salem Noble and sixty-two. I know there was some kind of talk earlier in the year about the adjustment, I believe you mentioned it. Um, you know, when people, especially this time of day, where they're, they're hanging out on sixty-two because that light's not long enough taking a left onto Salem Noble. Uh, and what's happening, I won't say I did it, but people are running the, the yellow and the red, okay? And they're trying to make, so I don't understand the point of that, uh, make it shorter, especially with Utica Sellersburg being closed. So, we need that flow of traffic to be expanded and so forth. And then, as you turn off Charlestown Pike onto Salem Noble where they pay, there's like a chunk now, a hole. So, if somebody could look at that, um, was there, right, when you're coming, you know, on Salem Noble where they pay, as you're turning, um, towards sixty-two off Charlestown Pike.
Okay.
There's like a chunk, it's a hole, there was, he's laying out the middle of the road yesterday, in Little Premier, actually. Um, but, um, so if you all could just take a look at both of those things. That stoplight is really a big concern for me. Like I say, I'm seeing people running it, and, and I understand why they would, because it's short. You, you're lucky you get four cars turning. If the, if number one guy is texting or sleeping or something, then you're screwed. There goes two or three. So, I don't know why that changed. Do you?
I don't know. If it was due to the construction, uh, the railroad went through there and put in ties, and I know they went ditching paving on both sides, and I don't know if that affected the loop or not, but I know coming off of sixty-two, the light's shorter, and going from Salem Noble across sixty-two has become shorter. So, we'll definitely, we can talk to you.
Yeah, I'm just worried mostly about people hanging out on sixty-two and, you know, on the fast line. And then, you know, we happen to run the, not me, run the yellow or red. Thank you all.
Uh, next up is Mr. Jason Miles.
Hello, I'm Jason Miles. Address is 25730 Gil Road in Manhattan. Um, I was at the meeting last night, you know, in the discussion of the solar. That was my first meeting, so this is kind of, I'm trying to catch up. I'm playing from behind here a little bit. But there are some concerns I have. I've grown up pretty much my entire life studying wildlife habits, their movement, everything about wildlife. Um, and a big concern that I have is the fenced-off areas. Right now, the way it stands with the compromise, at least the way I understand it, they could theoretically fence a thousand consecutive acres. The effect that will have on the deer and turkey populations, the bobcat, even coyotes, everything that we have, any large animals that we have, is going to have a very detrimental effect. For starters, it's going to push the deer and a lot of these animals onto the neighboring properties. It's going to cause a lot more crop damage for the neighboring farmers. Another thing it's going to do is going to restrict the areas where those animals can access roadways. You're going to have an extremely large amount of deer vehicle collisions, all kinds of collisions. Because when you fence an area that large, I mean, you're restricting their, but you're going to change their breeding habits. There's going to be a lot of issues come out of that. And I could elaborate, elaborate a lot more, but I didn't prepare anything for tonight. I didn't expect to be here, honestly, but here I am. Um, another thing I'd like to address is the setbacks. Um, I think the six hundred and fifty-foot setbacks are appropriate, and I think those need to be from property lines. I don't think that the, that a neighbor putting in solar fields should determine where I can build my house on my property and have that, that space as my buffer zone. Uh, that's just my opinion, but I wanted to put that on the record, and I appreciate y'all's time. Thanks.
And I'll get you some clarification on the UDO, what it says about contiguous acres. Um, because it was fifteen hundred contiguous acres, and I think we've all compromised and made a recommendation to the planning zoning committee to reduce that to a thousand acres with a wildlife corridor be required.
Okay. I didn't see the wildlife corridor, but I think, you know, I don't know if there's been any kind of a wildlife impact study done, but I think that should be done before any of this is set in stone. Um, I, I think it's going to have a lot bigger effect on our wildlife than anybody's taken into consideration.
Thank you. So, just for clarification, Sandy's shaking her head now.
She does not.
So, our note says on the current UDO, the wildlife corridor required is, is if fifteen hundred feet of contiguous acres is fenced. I thought what we compromised on is we reduced that to a wildlife corridor if a thousand acres were fenced, so we reduced that.
We reduced it to a thousand with no corridors.
The way I understood it, it looked to me like you could put a thousand acres in and then put a wildlife corridor in and then fence another thousand, the way I understood it. And I may have misunderstood that, but that's the way I understood.
Well, I'll get some clarification, because I was under the impression that with a thousand acres fenced, that there would be, and that's what my note says here. It says wildlife corridor required if a thousand contiguous acres are fenced.
Right, so, so what, and I'm sorry, nine, nine hundred and ninety-nine acres, we won't get a fifty-foot corridor, so.
Fair enough. Okay, I got, I got what you're saying. Okay, I apologize.
And, and that's, that's kind of where I'm at. I think that, I, I really think that there ought to be an impact study. If there's not, I think there needs to be some consideration on a distance possibly, other than maybe acres. I don't, I don't know exactly how the wording could go, but that's just too big of an area. You're going to run into a lot of issues. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next up is Kenny Spellman. And, Mr. Spellman?
I'm talking about the alleyway.
I think you're here to speak about the alley vacation, correct? And we'll open up a public hearing. I'd like you to speak then, if that's okay.
That's fine.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Um, that's all for public comment. We'll move on to new business. The first two things we have up will involve a public hearing. The first up before us is a rezoning ordinance, Plan Commission Resolution ten dash twenty-four. And I will go ahead and open up a public hearing, and this is an ordinance approving amendment to the Clark County Zoning Act on a favorable recommendation by the Clark County Commission. And, Mr. Miles, are you speaking on this?
Oh, if, the applicant can speak if he's here.
Yes. And this is the property of St. John's Road in Floyd's Knobs. Is the applicant here to speak on behalf of that? I don't see stuff. Okay.
This is two parcels. They are located on the corner of St. John's, as you mentioned. It's just under three-quarters of an acre. Uh, the current zoning is A G. They block its own V1, so they could do a, convert an existing barrage structure into a small detailed coffee shop, ice cream, that type of thing.
And this came to us with unanimous, a unanimous decision from, a favorable unanimous decision from the planning zoning committee.
That's correct.
Okay, is there anybody here to speak for or against this matter? Anybody? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing for ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-four. So, before the commissioners today is ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-four, which is an ordinance approving amendment to the Clark County Zoning Act on a favorable recommendation by the Clark County Planning Commission.
And I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-four.
I will second.
So, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance approving an amendment to the Clark County Zoning Act on a favorable recommendation by the Clark County Planning Commission. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero. Next up is ordinance number twenty dash twenty-four. And this is a petition to vacate portions of a public right-of-way, or a public way, a public easement in Underwood in an incorporated area and unincorporated area of Clark County, Indiana. Petitioner is Christopher Robertson. Is Mr. Robertson here? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up a public hearing. Is, are you Mr. Robertson?
No, I'm the engineer for the project.
Okay, so you're more than welcome to come up and kind of lead us through this. Okay.
Thank you, Graham. So, which runs on Zineville, 117 South of D N Avenue, Celebratory, Indiana. We're here on the behalf of Mr. Robertson, and as you said, we are trying to get, uh, an alley, an alley vacated in Underwood, Indiana, and also a fifty-foot street vacated. Both these are unimproved, and, uh, that's what we're here requesting. So, Mr., Mr. Robertson on both sides of the street is being unimproved, and he would, would, on half the alley is being unimproved, so.
Well, I would think on both sides, because it looks like Laurie Spellman owns part of the area, according to what was presented to us.
For the alley.
It's in, it's in the petition that the attorney for Mr. Robinson prepared in the drawing. We say he owns both sides.
He owns both sides of the fifteen-foot street.
Not the alleyway.
But not the alley.
Correct.
Yeah, Mr. Spellman owns half, what, 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 actually, the alley.
The owner of that, that was presented to us, it's Laurie Spellman. Yeah. Because under Indiana law, if you do vacate any sort of alleyway or public easement by law, um, the, uh, the contiguous property number split, according to your number show. So, according to what was presented to us, on the alleyway, there's two contiguous properties, Mr. Robertson and Laurie Spellman, so under the law, if you all do this, if you vacate it by law, it's split fifty.
That would, that would be correct.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure there's no misunderstanding that Mr. Robertson using petition to vacate it does not acquire one hundred percent control. It's split with the other contiguous property.
Correct, we understand that.
Okay, Mr. Robertson's. Okay, just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Just, just more.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Grimes?
Not unless you guys have any questions. Okay, we presented, I think we've also presented ordinances with it as well.
Sorry, I looked it up on the map, so it's just a grass area. It's not, it's not paved, or it's not. It's one of those things like, like, so many, almost like a hundred years ago or eighty years ago, about whatever, they plant things. They become a town. Underwood, it became a town. Some towns planted as an alleyway. If you look at it on Google Maps, it just looks like a yard. It's just not paved. It's not, it's not beautiful.
Okay, okay, so seeing that this is a public hearing, is there anybody here to speak for or against this vacation of a public way? I know, Mr. Spellman, you'd like to speak, correct, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Absolutely.
I'd like to represent Laurie Spellman.
Okay.
I just need a clarification, and I think that you explained it, it is state law that each property only sits after that alleyway.
Yeah, and tell them there was three contiguous zones that would be split one-third, or we would statute it as a portion.
And if that's true.
So, there was two, it'd be fifty-fifty. So, Miss Spellman, you have to have that alleyway, and Mr. Robertson, he doesn't get one hundred percent of that.
Um, but we vacated an alley years ago, and if that was the case, then we just want to clarify and make sure that's.
Absolutely, yes. So, when that's recorded, that would be sent down for the property plan maps and all that, to the different offices, that, you know, Miss Spellman would have one half of that alleyway.
We have no objections in closing the alley. Uh, I did, would like to, we weren't sure if Collins Street was on this or not. Uh, talking with Chris, he wasn't sure if, we knew the one on Bill Rock property was up in this alley.
I mean, technically, what was presented to us, it presented by Renshaw Brothers, Mr. Grimes, it just refers to an alley that would refer to straight paths and across here. This is what was presented in the petition. It doesn't say anything about, it's just an unnamed alley, so I don't know.
It just says being part of a ten-foot alley in Fairview addition to the town of Underwood. Uh, so it doesn't, doesn't name any roads.
I spoke with Chris over in the week. He wasn't sure if that was on the agenda of Collins Street.
I don't see that.
It's not. This, this is what's attached, but if you look at the crosshair, it's just, it's just the alleyway. The park does contiguous.
Especially if it has a named street, if we definitely line that out here.
So, I know what he said, Mr. Grimes, is about Collins Street, not on what was presented to us by the attorney.
I have a cloud if you look at it.
So, the only thing that we have before us tonight is the alleyway? And that that will have to be a different petition if you want to include that other road, because obviously, if it isn't a public road now?
No, in two thousand, I think it's two thousand and one, we actually vacated Collins Street behind our property, our house. It was, in our deed, it was vacated in nineteen thirty-seven.
Okay.
But it was never recorded, so we had to tell the office they didn't vacate it at that time. But it's still open, open off of East Street, and we have access to our property that way, or could have.
So, I think I would check with recorder's office and see if they've got anything recorded that it was vacated, and if it is, then the process is already done.
Okay. I know it was recorded on the property that we own, both sides of us, but it's not recorded. It's closed off of East Street for a hundred feet or so.
Okay.
It's still open now.
So, is, is, who's your attorney?
Natson was, did ours years ago.
Okay, so I think what I would do is we would speak with Mr. Grimes for your attorney to find out where that stands, or check the recorder's office and just see where that stands. And then you may have to go back through the process, but it sounds to me like if you've been through that and it was recorded in the recorder's office, it's just a matter of getting it closed.
So, we just, the portion of Collins Street that is still on the platte, we do not want it closed.
Okay.
The, the portion that's, it gives us access in the future to our property to find it.
Okay, so I guess before us tonight, though, we're going to take care of the alleyway tonight, and then we'll work towards Collins Street, Collins Road moving forward. Is that okay? Okay.
We have no objection for it now.
Okay, and you check with Miss Spellman? We've been married for thirty years. I'm just making sure. Is anybody else here to speak for or against this vacation? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and before the commissioners tonight is ordinance number twenty dash twenty twenty-four, which is a petition to vacate portions of a public way, a public easement in Underwood and unincorporated area of Clark County, Indiana.
I'll make that motion to approve ordinance number twenty dash twenty twenty-four.
So, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve ordinance number twenty dash twenty twenty-four. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero. Thank you all. Next up is our lease schedule with Crossroad Banks with right implement. I'm assuming these are for the tractors, correct?
Yeah, so if you remember, two meetings ago, they, um, how we planned to propose this financing for the tractors and related equipment for highway department, um, the, the lowest interest rate proposals from Crossroads Bank. So, we accepted that proposal, so these are simply the different lease financing documents. I know you said, we mentioned what we ordered approved.
Okay.
These are just the specific, um, finance documents. I think we have Mr. Rosen here, if you see him, from Crossroads Bank.
We see you about once a year, don't we?
Yeah.
You've, you've always been very good to us. We appreciate that.
I would hope you have any questions, um, you know, it's already been approved.
I don't think so. I think really all I need is.
We have to vote, we have to kind of vote to approve the.
I mean, and all the, you.
Pursuant to the.
We'll have to look at that. That is the lease schedule. I think you have it in your binders now.
And there are three parcels.
Yeah, there's three, Rich.
And we want to sign one tonight.
We signed three.
Send back for you to Indianapolis, correct?
I mean, we can, I can stay till after the meeting.
That's fine. We'll get it taken care of for you, I promise you. Assuming it comes to.
I make a motion to approve the financing, uh, schedule for the purchase of the track, of the tractors in the amount of four hundred and four thousand dollars, four hundred and four thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy cents uh, with, with Crossroads Bank.
Okay.
So, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the financing, um, schedule with Crossroads Bank in the amount of four hundred and four thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy cents with an interest rate of four dot nine oh with three annual payments.
Yes.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero, and I'll sign you a copy before you leave. Next up is Catalyst Rescue Mission opioid restricted funds request. How are you?
Here, Matt, we'll give you others out there.
Sure. Yes.
One of the things that, that you might be helpful is, uh, I think that's been a graphic statistics of two thousand and twenty-three. It's over filmed to double that score, obviously.
One of the things I wanted to kind of bring to y'all's attention is the number of Clark County residents that the shelter sees on a regular, and these are from two thousand and twenty-three. This represents four hundred Clark County residents from the various cities that we all know. You know, Clarksville, Sellersburg, I just met with the mayor of Charlestown two days ago. We work with people from across Clark County to actually minister to the people that are on the fringes, who are on the street, who need the help that we can assist them with. One of the things you'll notice on here is that, uh, we actually work with tons of people, more than would actually come through our shelter, that need substance use help. Some of those things that we do, if you look at the bottom, just at the substance use. Last year, we did a hundred and eighty-nine referrals, mostly through this lady, Meredith Clip Rodriguez. That's our executive director. Um, she's really good at someone coming in, they're in active addiction, calling down the list of every one of those places that have openings in Clark County to get these folks in. And so, what happens after they go through their thirty days? You know, the next step for them, you know, a lot of them don't have the infrastructure. They don't have a place to go. In fact, the places that they end up going are places that probably aided in the addiction that they previously had. Uh, we take them, we're a sober living environment. We do drug tests, we do, uh, breathalyzers. You know, we have staff twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We have case management, uh, we have oversight of their schedules. Um, and so, we provide another infrastructure for them to get connected with that next step. And that's really what this proposal's about. After someone goes through that detox, through that program, where do we go in Clark County? Um, you know, the avenues, we deal with folks, folks from Sunrise, the folks that are in our community already. The interesting thing for me is the statistics that we have here come off their ID, their last address that they actually lived. So, it's not just self-reporting. These are entered into HMIS as the last address they lived at. Some of those folks may have that last address they lived at two years ago, but it's in New Albany, but they've been on the streets in Clark County for, you know, the last three years or whatever, two years. One of the things that we're looking at doing is providing forty beds and calling the area sober, excuse me, detox facilities and programs, and saving those beds for those folks that are exiting programs and giving them the extra leg up, the extra assistance, hiring a, a second case manager onto our, our staff to work with those people, to get them into job training, to get them into the warm handoff to other services that they need. To also, um, not only doing that, but providing that job training, uh, that life skills training. I know that sometimes we're far removed. I know that sometimes we're far removed from some of the daily tasks that they have a struggle with, but I want to kind of, I know I don't have a ton of time, but I'm going to give you one example. Uh, we have a, a chef that works at our facility, and I would go down and I'd prepare a special meal that, you know, they'd never had before. In fact, it was shrimp scampi linguine, and it's something that, you know, I like, and so I bought all this stuff, and I prepared it with the chef. And so I invited some of the other folks that lived at the shelter to cook with me. And it baffles me, but just holding a knife the proper way to cut a potato, we know how to do it, we have a kitchen. And, uh, I have to teach them how to hold a knife, how to cut a potato, how to skin a potato, how to do all the basic things that we hit granted, because we've done it. Most of the folks that we see, their, their normal food would be something they would pick up at a gas station, they could cook in a microwave, or something that was picked up at a drive-through. When maybe one of the first times they've ever bought all the ingredients to a real meal and cooked it, happens at Catalyst Rescue Mission. We put out seventy-seven thousand meals a year, that's a ton of meals. Um, and a kitchen that really needs remodeling, by the way, but we, we, we minister to these people in ways that I think gets them the effective, uh, life skills to go to that next step. One of the things I'm most proud of, and you can look at the bottom of the statistics yourself, we were shooting for a hundred last year, a hundred people moved into housing. We hit eighty-nine, and, uh, if you look at, if you take the numbers, nine hundred fifty-three, which is a total of individuals served last year, eighty-nine isn't bad. That means we actually, actually, I moved them in personally myself, we got them all their furniture, she worked with them to get them all into their housing, and we, we got them in. And so it's, I know you all know this, you've heard it before, we need more, uh, supportive housing for those folks, if you give me more housing, I can get more people in. I mean, we have bigger numbers, but I think that, that next step of handing off folks that need that extra three months to a year of follow-up case management to work with them, to get them stable in the community is a big thing of where we're missing, that, that mark of how we measure time for people that are opioid addicted. You have any questions about the proposal that we have? One of the things I added on there, and I don't know if you, who all read it, or exactly how much you read. My church owns a daycare, and one of the things I offered in there is daycare vouchers, I don't know if you saw that in the, in the reading. But I, I'd asked our daycare director, could we hold a certain number of spots available for kids? Because we, we also are a reunification zone for Department of Family and Children, so families get reunited with their kids at our facility, and that's the big thing. Once you get reunited with the kids, now can I really work, can I get that next step? And we do take CCDF funding, which is, um, funding that helps single parents, uh, with their childcare, so we can actually give them some of that extra help with their, their families too. One of the things I'm hoping to do with our new case manager would be to actually do parenting classes. I always say this, and people, it blows their mind, I think the number one most contributing factor to homelessness isn't all the things that you talk about, it's lack of parenting. They haven't been parented, they haven't been taught those life skills, they're, you know, writing a check, opening a checking account for the first time. I took one of our guys the other day, and opened up a checking account, and he didn't know how to use it as a card, write a check, how do I do all that? That life skills, the basic things, somebody needs to teach them, but their family of origin, which my dad helped me open my first checking account, I don't know who helped you with yours. But he also told me about overdrafting, and how much money, and, you know, preparing a budget, looking ahead. None of those things that we normally think is, uh, you know, comes from your family of origin, our folks have received from their families. We do those things, uh, all of our staff surround these folks, um, and provide them the needs. The other thing is we have a partnership with, uh, Clark County Health Department. I don't know how many doses of naloxone that we have put out, but we're onto our second box of, I think, two hundred and fifty. So we give out with the, we have meals that come up for walk-ups, outreach, these are people on the street that haven't, you know, I passed by a lady today, begged her to get off the street. We've talked to her, she's been in our facility before, she has a broken leg, got hit by a car a couple of days ago, is on a walker, walking down the street. Uh, with our meals that we pass out, we pass out some basic things that come from the Clark County Health Department, naloxone, we pass out condoms. We get them connected with services that, that Clark County Health Department puts out, but we are a distribution side for some of those things to try to keep our county better, if that makes sense. Do you have any questions about the proposal?
Is naloxone, is that a generic form of suboxone?
No, naloxone, um, what is the reading? If you're overdosing, narcin, that's called naloxone, I'm sorry. So, yeah, we give that out so that if people are overdosing, um, they can, they have that at their disposal, and that's part of the opioid settlement money they talk about being distributed. We, we've been doing this stuff, and we do it because the clients need it. One of the things you'll see in this proposal, while it's not a proposal, but in the statistics that I handed out to you, um, I think is pretty important. That street outreach number of two hundred and eighty individuals, we only started keeping track of that once HMIS gave us a grant of ten thousand dollars to, to actually work with the homeless people. We, we did it before, but we never took their names and their birthdays and their socials to keep track of them, but that's only half of a year of individual people that we touched. It's, the numbers are far greater, when two thousand twenty-four, I expect that number to be in the four hundred range of individuals on the street. Because one of the things you might need to know is that we're not a low-barrier shelter. If you come in and you're in active use, or if you're cataclysmically mentally ill, or you're a sexual, uh, on the sexual registry, uh, we don't take you that way. Because we have, we're also the only domestic violence shelter in Clark County, we have women and children on one floor, and men on another floor. And so they eat separately, they have separate yards, all those things, but we, we also don't take violent felons, that's another thing, because we don't want to lay the lion with the lamb. So that kind of gives you, we have some, we're, we're not a low-barrier shelter, we have some requirements that they have to meet to get there, and we'll help them get to those things. If they need to go to Clark County Hospital, get regulated on medicine, get an injection, come back to us after they're stable, if they need to go to treatment, we'll work with them to treat them, we'll be there, pick them up when they're done, and bring them back to our facility.
All right, well, I have some questions about.
Yes.
And I, and I want to thank, I'm going to be clear, I had to call Mr. Murren a couple of weeks ago because I had a lady from Sellersburg, someone gave her my name. I don't know who gave her my name. Um, when I was in code enforcement, I used to, um, have to try to help people in the same way. Unfortunately, we didn't have the facility available then, and it was really difficult. Um, but she was going to be evicted from her home, and I knew that she was going to end up on his doorstep, so I gave him a call. And, um, he was able to hopefully resolve the situation.
Yeah, she called me back today, and you all, any of you, if you come across somebody in Clark County that is in a homeless situation, you, I don't like my, I just changed my phone number for this very reason, which was I was having people start to call from who are in need of help. I don't mind you all calling, or Meredith doesn't mind you all calling, if you find some person in need, we'll try to reach out to them. We do have certain things that we have to do, that we can save off an eviction, that's the best-case scenario for us, we don't want another person on the street. The other thing, let me ask something before you say, Louisville, we don't take residents from Louisville. That's something Mike Moore and I talked about when we very first took over, we send people back across the bridge, if they have a Louisville ID, or they have Louisville Medicaid, we don't accept them. Now, if they're out in Radcliffe and they get stranded here for some reason, we will take people from Kentucky, but Louisville and Jefferson County, they have plenty of resources, so we, unfortunately, we'll hand them a meal and and a shower, and maybe some new shoes, and we'll send them on their way, so that kind of gives you a, we're not trying to work with folks, it's mostly, it's people from Indiana.
So since we don't, we know very little about yourselves, or except that you do, I think, personally, I think you do a great job. Um, I'm looking at the, at the salary, and it's for twenty twenty-four. Um, are these new salaries? That's what I'm trying to figure out, is this a new, is this for a new program?
This is a percent of the, of those forty beds, what it would take for us to open those forty beds and actually supervise them correctly. This is the, this is if we did it in twenty twenty-four, you said today, and we have to get our staff in order, hire the people to do all that, this is what it would take for us to get that done.
Okay.
Per year. Per year.
Per year, so, but you said it's a percentage, so it's not the full amount?
It is not the full amount, no.
Okay, so how much of a percentage is it?
Uh, it's based on the forty beds, whether the forty beds are the percentage of the overall shelter, that's the number. So I don't know the exact percent off the top of my head right now, but it, you take those forty beds out of the hundred and forty beds that we have, and you make that percentage work, that's where those numbers came from. Does that make sense? And in fact, we, when I say the number of beds we're able to serve at Catalyst, that doesn't, Sean isn't here, and the state fire marshal isn't here. But if it's white flag conditions, or these extreme temperatures that we've been having, we don't follow a bed structure. We, it's everybody do what you need to do to be here, so you're not, you know, getting in a situation in the street where you might possibly die. And we will put mats on the floor, and we'll do whatever it takes to get people in, but then again, we will then weed them back out, if there are people that are on the street, we'll put them back in the position they were before, after those weather events occur, if that makes sense.
So to Connie's point, right now you're operating at a hundred beds, and you're hoping to increase that to a hundred and forty, and that's forty beds would be this new program that you're talking about?
Yes, and I'm wanting to work with the people that are coming out of these, and we do work with them some now, but I have, neither one of us have made a call to any of the places, saying we want your people right now. But we're planning on doing that and getting an extra case manager to work with those folks, and do some programming that I think might be helpful in those situations.
So is this two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar total expense, that would be what you would need to operate those forty beds for a year, is that correct?
Yes, for one full year, yes, sir.
And is this, this, is this hiring new people, or is this adding like these decades to our Meredith's set you?
That's a percentage of her salary, she's going to need to supervise those people that we have that are there.
Is the intake specialist a new person?
That's going to be more than one person.
Okay, that, these were things that we kind of needed to note, so like, we would put like two by it, so we would not have.
More like three. So intake specials are hourly employees, those are the folks that manage the facility twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. If we have extra folks that are in the building, uh, there are going to be times we have to have a second staff person, only more than one person to manage the situation, we have to ban cameras, we have to oversee. So that's, if you, I said this the other day to one of our staff people, normally we'll have one person round the clock through the whole day, okay, if that makes sense, so there are three shifts a day. We're going to have to have extra people to do that, that work, to make this all work, we're going to have to have people that, you know, do the, uh, the other piece, I mean, just give you this. We don't transport as much as I'm saying that we're probably going to have to transport some of these folks, but we're going to have to have someone to drive a vehicle to get people to where they need to be. Those are the kind of things we're talking about.
So the point that Scott brought up, and something that, that I guess is, is we need to be concerned about is, with this being your overall annual budget, and with the opioid restricted funds being front-loaded.
This is not our overall annual budget, this is just a percentage of all year of that.
Just for these forty minutes.
This service has forty minutes.
Yeah.
So if we were to hypothetically fund this two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, what's the plan for twenty twenty-six?
To go and see the same kind of funding from, like, I met with, one of the things I did the other day is I met with Triva, we talked about some, some things we can do for that particular, she has opioid restricted funding, and some funding in the city of, uh, Charlestown, also Clarksville. But going and doing, writing those grants and doing those things that continue to work with these kind of people, it gives us that head start, which we need to get to that point of talking to the other people, and it releases us with the staffing that we need, and the, uh, work that we need to do to get it going, if that makes sense. I think there's funding out there, like, we write grants every day, I wrote, along with this, I wrote six other grants, so it's that kind of work that needs to be done, and will continue to be done to make sure we can work with these kind of people, because it's, it is a need here, I know you see that, I know you know that.
Because I think the concern, I guess, originally is, is like, it's two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. If you fund that, like I said, that, that reduces that opioid restricted fund money that we have in our balance.
Of course.
And there's not that much money coming in anymore, like I said, it's front-loaded, and it kind of, it dwindles in for the next couple of years, so.
We won't have it.
We're not going to be that big of a partner moving forward, I guess, we don't want to start a program, and then all of a sudden, now we're in a bond and nobody has any money, what's, what's the plan moving forward? I noticed you had a, a ton of partners at the beginning, are a lot of these other partners partnering in this program, or are they partnering around the other hundred beds?
Both.
Both, okay.
Yeah, and, and not only that, we're seeking, uh, one of the things that Wendy Dan and I met the other, are going to be, we talked the other day about increasing some of our partnerships with some of the people in this very area, River Ridge, and getting us in front of some folks to talk about some of the things that we do. I think that, that, uh, I would love for you to come down and take a look, I mean, I think that you would be surprised, and I think it'd be in a pleasant sort of way. It's, uh, you know, thanks to Dale Poff, who's sitting behind me, um, and, you know, the grant writing that we've done, we've been able to turn around something that for the, the longest time, I think, has been something that is not so good for Clark County. And at this point, um, we've been doing this since August of two thousand nineteen, we just celebrated five years. And, um, I look at the, I always say this, every person comes in the office, I point at the files, there's five thousand files there, like, it makes me, like, emotional. We've worked with five thousand people in five years, that's insane to me, but, uh, that's folks that we've touched, that's folks that we've ministered to, that's folks we got into housing. We've got over five hundred people in housing over the course of all the whole time we've been here, that's just crazy to me. But we gotta, we have to continue to be able to do this work, and it's getting increasingly more difficult with the folks that, when we have, um, these treatment facilities, and where do the folks go, I think sometimes they go back into addiction because they don't have a stable place to come. This gives them that stable connection, that we're going to reach out and talk with every one of them, and say, we want your people, if they don't have a place to go, they're, come, let them come here, if they don't have a stable place to be.
Do you work with, with bribe, and with the recovery, with the jails, or the courts, I'm sorry, not the jail?
I'm on, uh, mental health homeless court in Clark County. And, uh, so we, we work with a lot of the folks that are, you know, both in mental health treatment, but also their substance use. You know, that's what the, I don't know if you know all these different verbiages, but S U D M H is substance use disorder, disorder with mental health-related conditions. Yeah, so that's what happens, if a substance use disorder occurs, and I, and we've seen it in real people, that if they're on substances for a great deal of time, um, they end up with mental health conditions that look like something else, even when they're off the drugs. They, they'll appear schizophrenic, they'll appear bipolar, but it's because they were on the substances, and it's destroyed their brain, and it's caused them to have these mimicking conditions. That's what that piece is right there.
So you all see the two thousand twenty-four opioid award budget that was presented, and Catalyst is here requesting, um, some funds from the opioid restricted funds that we had in our possession right now. So, uh, that is the request today.
I think right now it's approximately a million dollars, uh, like, even after I think we needed the court award in the restricted funds.
And the court just awarded, what was it, a hundred and nine thousand?
Hundred and eleven thousand. Hundred and eleven thousand.
So, so say if you was to receive this full award, what's your plan for, you may have alluded to this before, in twenty twenty-five, or in the next, next year? You know, or do you have a contingency plan or a future plan for, for future funding? Uh, is there more grants that you're going to try to apply for?
Well, there's a couple of them from the DMHA, and some of you might know that we received a one point one million dollar grant during COVID from DMHA. That's the, the MSSA, DMHA Division of Mental Health and Addiction. There's, if we start this program and it is successful, there is some pathways and avenues for us to actually apply for some state funding. Here, here's the issue with state funding, for homeless shelters, just regular homeless shelters, emergency shelters, that the cap is, what, sixty thousand? There's some other caveats issue, like, street outreach, the cap is, what, ten thousand? Um, last year, it's based upon the number of people in the continuum, continuum of care in that area, and so and it's, it's a self-reporting, one-day reporting, the total number of that day that receives the funding for your county, I don't know if you're aware of all that. They happen in April, um, and they go out and they count every person, we have to provide numbers to the state, and then they send money down, um, for that. So last year would be forty-three thousand, and the ESG. Thirty-three for the ESG, and ten thousand for the street outreach, is what we received last year, that, we didn't even receive the max, because that day, they, the way that they counted all the people, there's more people on the street, obviously, than they're able to count in one day. Uh, it's called a point-in-time count, I don't know if you've ever heard of that before. Um, and that is account folks that are homeless in, uh, these facilities we're talking about today, that doesn't even consider those numbers. They go to the street, they go to the homeless shelter, they try to go to the places where people gather, like the library, but there's all these workers that go out that day, they get a number. they get a number, they sit at the state, and that's how they calculate these fun, these funds. That is the total amount that the state is allowed to give you, um, as an emergency shelter, that's it. Sixty grand is the top, we received fifty-three last, or forty-three, forty-three last year, or for this year. We have received some of those COVID-related funds, but we both know, or we all know, that those have ended, right? There was extra money you could apply for to do other things, but those are all gone. Um, so my job is, is we create this program to go to Division of Mental Health and Addiction, to go to other businesses and other avenues to try to get funding to do this, right? I think there are some, uh, other things we kind of are looking at, but we're going to have, this is a first step to get us going to do those things.
Okay.
If we don't have the program started, it's hard to do the other stuff.
I have a question, on your, in your budget, you have expenses listed, and it's labeled on the properties, like utilities, building maintenance, and the regular, those are expenses you're going to have no matter what, correct? I mean, whether you service one person or two?
Well, it depends on, it depends, it's the extra expenses incurred per day.
The extra expenses.
For those forty beds.
For those forty beds.
So this is extra, so the twenty, since this is the budget for twenty-four, is this really all for twenty twenty-four?
It'll be from, this, it'll be from one year.
To twenty twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-five, so if we did it, it's, we wrote a check today, or whatever the money would be, it's going to get us to.
This is next year.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right. It's a one-year commitment.
That was also a little confusing.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay.
And we were looking at this as your total budget.
No.
Especially the budget.
For this program, for forty beds.
Yes, sir.
So the total request that they've made is two hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. If you wanted to fund the project at a, at a fifty percent rate, it's approximately a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. If you wanted to fund the program as they've laid out here, that includes the outreach, the food, the supplies, the daycare vouchers, and say possibly a case manager, that comes up to about a hundred and two thousand dollars. So there's a multitude of ways that you can do it, it's really, it's, it's up to us however we want to fund it, so.
Do we have any other requests coming in for that money? Did we know that, has anybody, court, did anything else, has anybody come in?
Uh, not yet. But we expect so, we expect, yeah. Just remember, so, we also, for any of the awards we give to subrecipient, subrecipient, these opioid funds, we have a, we have an agreement, and it'll be subject to a written agreement, and I always attach, um, you know, these were some of the funds from the National Class Action Laws, that the Attorney General represents all of us on. So there's, uh, pursuant to that, Class Action Lawsuit, they call it Exhibit E, like, I believe fifteen pages, and so it shows what the remediation uses are, so that's a part of the agreement, where we have a solid agreement that you are certifying that the funds are limited to those approved, and you see, if you look at.
So there'll be a big agreement that your attorney, you know, so then somehow, you know, the, the, the money's not used according to the agreement, you know, that.
What we would do is start tracking, for this, you have to start tracking for this request. And one of the things you'll notice, I use Exhibit E in this request.
Yeah, so you're familiar with.
Yeah, I use, I use all the Exhibit E, the actual things that I wrote, if you look at, I don't know if you have the request before you, but if you look at, um, I know there's a lot to it, I couldn't give you more information than you needed, but F S A Exhibit E focus areas of this grant request, if you go down each one, all those specific areas that we, um, added here are from Exhibit E. They're saying that these are the things from Exhibit E we will be doing, and it will say, uh, these are the things, this is the way we're going to spend the money, we'll start tracking how many doses of naloxone we pass out, we'll start tracking, so whenever you request, you know, a report, what we're trying to report to you with that information is that this is how many people, this came from Sunrise, this, I'm not sure, we're not going to, sometimes what we do, we actually put, um, some people's information, like, we'll say BG, you know, that's from Sunrise, you know, male from Sunrise, or CS, female from Hickory, or wherever, and then use that as a way to report. Sometimes people just want just the total number from each place, however you would like it, that's how we'll do it. And the total number would suffice, yeah.
Okay. Clip up. Just to verify, so when we're talking about, we're talking, you said that about, the amount that you thought was probably restricted.
Restricted, sorry.
Not unrestricted.
Two seventy-three.
And the restricted funds are subject to what we call Exhibit E, the National Class Action Lawsuit, it's for treatment and aid money, fifteen pages, so. Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
And I went through there, and I just worked on things I know that we can do, there are some things that are way outside the scope of something like, uh, what we can accomplish.
So I make the motion that we, um, I'll get it back to my page, sorry. Um, that we, uh, grant Catalyst's mission for the, from the restricted funds, use the full amount in, in two hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Subject to a written.
Subject to the written.
Subrecipient.
Subject to the written.
Hundred and thirty-three. We have to bet on it.
I'll second.
So the motion and the second on the floor, to approve the request for two hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars from Catalyst Rescue Mission for the, from the opioid restricted funds, how did you say that?
Subject to, subject to, signed, written. Seventy-seven three.
Absolutely. The motion and the second on the floor, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero. Congratulations, goodbye, thank you for what you did.
They might have talked about this, that I was just trying to figure out some stuff, so I wasn't hearing your opinion, so. Um, I would report for you to come back and give us a review.
You told me when, if you told me when, then I'll be there, and then also.
I was thinking six months.
You go ahead. Uh, she does all the counting of things, I'm, I'm just here to help her get the big picture, she does all the, she's the real worker, I'm just here to figure, she makes me look good, so, thank you so much, our, our folks in Clark County really appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll, first of all, uh, thank you, appreciate that, uh, I want to, I know I'll call all three of you in different forms of contact. Uh, is, I do encourage you to visit, and see, get a handle, because it's not, it's not the H A B N A S. It's the same building with many changes, but it's a Catalyst Rescue Mission, and, and you're, you're getting a real condensed version of the dedication of what these two people are showing here. I'm kind of a backup person, but this is where the boots we can grab, right here, and it's, it's a, there's a lot going on there. And it's impressive, so do the first event. Call Jim, me, or whoever, and we'll set up a date for you if you want.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
You guys, Andy, were you going to hit with Scott about the agreement?
Yeah, sure, thank you so much.
You want to email us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, just emailing.
Okay.
Next up is United Consulting Task Order Number Six, Pavement Asset Management Plan.
Yes.
I want to say asset.
Yeah.
So this is, as you know, this is the required, um, pavement asset management plan that's required to be submitted to, in that, for transportation, so, uh, when Max comes before, so if you look at the task orders for that required plan, uh, pavement asset management plan for twenty twenty-four would be the amount of, uh, according to the task order, fifty, fifty-four thousand dollars, and then the updated plan for twenty twenty-five would be ten thousand. So this particular task order for the required, uh, in that plan would be a total of sixty-four thousand for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
The motion and the second on the floor, to approve Task Order Number Six, which is a pavement asset management plan, the amount of sixty-four thousand dollars with United Consulting. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero, and we all have to sign that. Next up on the agenda is the quotes for the pickup trucks for the Highway Department.
Yeah, so see that in there, um, Highway Administrator, Sarah, the email explaining things, so, um, Tim, Bachman, two per ten, they've requested quotes from three different providers, the three different dealers. So what, what the Highway Department's looking for is two, um, Chevy Silverado sixteen-hundred pickup trucks, and then one twenty twenty-four Chevy Silverado thirty-five-hundred, um, truck, they had a specific utility combo bed, a certain size to, to pull certain equipment, so if you look at the, the quotes that came back, Coil, John Jones, and Bachman all responded, so for the total of the, total of three trucks is what we're looking for. Um, Coil was the only one that actually has all three trucks firmly on their lot that would be given immediately. And Coil was the only one, the, uh, the, the, the requested one, they had a certain type of utility combo bed that we needed. So Coil was the only one that met that specification, or you know what we requested. So if you go through the quotes, the total for the three trucks, Coil is one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three fifty-eight. Technically Bachman, for the total of the three, was lower at one sixty-eight, seven seven four, but it's stated Bachman's, um, does not have, you know, got the trucks available right now, they're going to be a long delay. And the, the quote on the Silverado thirty-five-hundred didn't have the specific combo bed size in, in the way that was requested from the Highway Department. So the recognition from the Highway Department that meets our needs pursuant to what was requested and what's available right now would be Coil Chevrolet for those three trucks. And if you look at the email letter from the Highway Department, we have money on hand in the equity funds, so we're not required to finance any.
Mr. Man. I was, I was, Miss, could I take a picture real quick for our publicity sake, or would you have a stock picture that you would like us to use, that would be publicity after this, to take a sign on? Um, whatever you choose, I don't know that we have a stock photo, but whatever you choose.
You want to be in the photo? I'll take it.
If you'd like to.
We're almost done, you want to do it now?
Right away. We'll be down here in a few minutes.
Let's take a picture on the.
Okay, that's just good.
Thank you.
Okay, so before your three quotes, the Coil was the, the, uh, preferential quote at one sixty-nine, three fifty-eight, and I think it's imperative to quote the fact that we have enough money on hand to purchase these without financing, that's, that's, that speaks volumes to our Highway Department and our Highway Administrator, and, and our fiscal responsibility.
Yes, sir, and then the one that's a thirty-five-hundred Chevy Silverado, that's used specifically as a sign truck, which does require some specially tight boxes and tool storage to do, to complete that job, so it's not the kind of place, you can't get that type of box just in committee dealership, especially since they already have one on. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the, uh, three trucks that are listed here from Coil Chevrolet, at a total price of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, no financing required, cash money is on hand.
So the motion and the second on the floor, to approve the quote and purchase three trucks from Coil Chevrolet in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, no financing required, pay for it, cash on hand. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero, I know Andy's ready to call that, one truck for the sign. So, okay, any other old business? All right, moving on to reports, Mr. Otter, anything tonight?
Couple of quick things, first, I'm entering the Treasuries Report into the record.
Okay.
You have that, the second thing on, on Bittersweet note, I guess, this was between Trays last week, but this.
Oh.
He's moving, he's moving on to bigger and better things.
What, what?
Actually, we're happy for him, looking forward to his next expansion.
So tell us about where you're moving to.
Well, I'm working, uh, at a mid-soul work that starts up the job, uh, two weeks ago, I'm a fire department, so, I'm excited. I think next though.
Oh.
We're going to miss you. I will, uh, I'm exhausted the last two years, so.
Well, I hope you have a chance to learn sometime.
I hope.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's all I have.
Mr. Drake?
My goodness.
Uh, Mr. Dixon is on break, Jason. Major Mobley?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Butler, our jail numbers are four hundred and fifty-six, so I'm making twenty-seven, that'll make.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Any other elected official? Seeing none, any other business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, the motion and the second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.